The Thursday, March 14, 2019, regular meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission will now come to order. May I have your call, please?
Commissioner Gomez?
Here.
Commissioner Gooding?
Here.
Commissioner Mackin?
Here.
Commissioner Patel?
Here.
Commissioner Seisan?
Here. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
I make a motion that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. And the consent calendar, is there anyone who would like to pull an item off from the consent calendar? I see no one. May I have a motion to adopt?
Make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oral communications, is there anyone that would like to address the commission regarding an item that's not on tonight's agenda? See, no one. Written communications, I have none. We turn to old business. This concerns a public hearing that was continued in the meeting of February 14, 2019, regarding use permit UP-10-18 to allow assembly of tota carts and storage of empty tota carts within an existing approximately 35,000 square foot warehouse building on 595 Tunnel Avenue. Christine Borji was the applicant and Recology Properties the owner. Staff, do we have an update?
No, we're recommending that this matter be continued to the meeting of February, of March 28th. So entertain a motion if that's the commission's pleasure.
I just have a question.
Yes.
So I just have a question as it relates to this particular property. Is it still operating as it was without the permits right now?
Yes, it is. They had a number of, as you recall from the last meeting, there were certain conditions that, you know, questions the commission had about the current status of the business and their use of the property beyond what they were proposing. They weren't able to show, I think, sufficient progress, in our opinion, to make it worthwhile for the commission to consider the matter tonight, recommending two more week continuance. At that point, due to certain regulatory and statutory requirements under state law, the commission will be in a position to make a final, there really will be no ability to extend it any further. That'll be the last opportunity for the commission to take action on it, one way or the other, approve or deny. But we didn't feel they made enough progress to warrant coming back tonight based on the commission's input from the last meeting.
Any other comments from anyone else? Okay, next, we have a study session concerning-
Oh, Madam Chair, I do need a motion and action to approve that or continue the matter.
Okay, okay. And we have a motion to continue the public hearing on UP-10-18 to the meeting of March 28th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have the study session concerning inclusionary housing and density bonus ordinance update. Staff, can we have a presentation?
Sure. Good evening, Chair and Commission. So tonight, we're having another study session on our inclusionary housing and density bonus ordinance update. So I'll keep it fairly brief because we want to get to the main presentation tonight. But in the staff report, we summarized the revisions we've made thus far with the direction you've given us relative to our implementation of our housing element programs and state law AB 1505. So those were revisions both to the inclusionary and density bonus ordinance. Specifically for the inclusionary, we're moving forward at this point with recommendation to reduce the minimum unit threshold from a six-unit project to a five-unit project. We're also adjusting the inclusionary requirement itself to be straight percentages rather than the current kind of sliding scale scheme, and that's primarily to comply with AB 1505, which is only applicable to rental, but we've also applied that to the for-sale projects as well for consistency. And then as well as creating an alternative to actually building rental inclusionary units, which we've opted for a fee, an in-loofe, which again, we're obligated to provide one alternative that a developer can choose to take rather than build them for rentals. And then for the density bonus ordinance, fairly streamlined, we really just kind of stripped out what's repetitive of the state density bonus law, and what we're also recommending is to implement one of our housing element programs, density bonus incentives for small projects, so those are less than five units, that wouldn't otherwise be eligible under state density bonus law, and then to provide additional concessions or incentives for projects that exceed the state's density bonus qualification. So those are the changes you've looked at before, they're all kind of coming from the discussions we've had with you over the past couple months. In the interim, the last time we discussed this was in January. So we are prepared to kind of bring a draft ordinance to you guys around this time, but we've gotten some feedback from commissioners with more questions on how can we basically extract more benefit from small projects, which in the last several years, we've really only seen small projects actually come for building permit. So I pulled this from our housing element annual report. We've kind of broken down our building permits issued since 2014. These don't reflect the planning approvals that you guys have approved in the past couple years, which we have one triplex on Tulare, two fourplexes on San Bruno, and then the 16-unit senior housing project. Those got planning approvals, they have not yet gotten their building permit. So there are some other larger projects out there, they just haven't come to us to build. So I wanted to set this up because I think this really illustrates the fact that by and large, we're really seeing single-family home development, which you'll see in 2014, that huge spike is from the Northeast Ridge. So in normal years, we were seeing much lower levels of development. In recent years, that we've trended a lot towards ADUs, that's really the bulk of our housing production, especially last year. And then we have sprinkled within that smaller, there's two, three-unit projects that we've permitted in the last five years. So I think that really touches on the topic that we're going to talk about tonight, which is again, how do we get, you know, a benefit from the largely, you know, three to four-unit market rate projects that are the trend or what's really kind of coming down in the, you know, our recent history at least, and maybe in the near future, that's what we're going to see. We've talked in the past about nexus fees that would apply to market rate development and that sort of thing, we haven't spent a lot of time about it. So we thought this would be a good opportunity to bring in 21 Elements staff, and 21 Elements, I think all of you, or some of you attended their January training for commissioners. But basically, 21 Elements is a consortium of county staff, so all the cities and the county and the county itself, sharing best practices for housing policies and also providing guidance when new state laws come down and that sort of thing. So Josh Abrams is here tonight with 21 Elements to kind of walk through the economics behind housing development and how do inclusionary requirements and other type of affordable housing requirements impact the development of housing projects. Josh, do you want to take it away and just speak into that mic there?
Great, thank you. So I'm going to, I'm actually, I don't have a presentation, I'm going to do it a little bit of an interactive, more discussion, and I thought I would just walk through some of the fundamental economics of real estate development, and then we'll talk a little about how they apply to smaller projects, because I know that's one of the big, the big questions, and we'll also apply the general real estate economics to inclusionary in particular. And I, so I do 21 Elements, I manage 21 Elements, like Julia said, as a collaboration of all the cities and county, in San Mateo County, and I also have worked with a bunch of cities on their inclusionary housing policies. So I worked with, in the county, Redwood City and South San Francisco to update their policies, and then some work in more far-flung places, Detroit and Seattle also. Okay, so I'm going to start with the basics, which is, real estate economics in some ways is really similar to every other, every other economics question, so. Yeah, I can try and hold it as this goes. Bear with me, I think we're good. It's the cost to build minus the sales price, and that equals the profit. And if you're a developer, the goal is to have that profit high enough that it all pencils out. In reality, a lot of the profit will go to your outside investors, but we can come back to that in a little bit. Do you guys want to guess, when we start with the cost part of the equation, do you want to guess what are the costs that go into a development?
Broken out by line item?
By line item.
Oh, I mean, you've got materials, labor, I'm thinking administrative overhead, and that would be like the permitting and the, yeah, all the layers of permitting, architectural...
I did a project a few years ago, so.
Cost of land?
That's good. So let me, so labors and materials, we're going to call that, those are hard costs, like nails, hammers, the real construction, architects, engineers, surveyors, all those things, we're going to call them soft costs, legal fees, all those things. The permitting, so fees to the city and, those are what we have so far. What else would you add to the list?
Financing.
Anything else?
Insurance.
Let me see where I have, I have insurance as a separate item, yeah.
I guess the cost of land initially.
Land.
Land's a big one. Yeah, so you can put marketing, I sometimes think of marketing as like a deduction in the sales price, but you could put marketing over on the cost side too. What do you mean by overhead?
Every contractor's got to have an office, certain amount, the telephone, fax machine, phone bill.
Okay.
Vehicles, that would all be part of, no matter what the project, there would be an overhead allocated per project.
Okay. I think those are all the items I have. And then, so just to give you a sense of the breakdown, it's, I haven't looked at anything as small as like a three or four unit project, so I don't really know. We looked at 35 unit one in South San Francisco Town Homes, but again, that's, it's still far enough away that it's, it's not super useful. The Turner Center, which is a research center, looked at some costs and what they, but there was, there was a multifamily development, but it's still interesting, and we could, we'll talk at the end maybe about how some of the costs would be different for a bigger development or a smaller one. We have, they had land at about 11%, of the cost. Hard costs were about two-thirds of it. The one other thing that's not here is there's often a developer's fee, which is kind of different than the profit. The profit is like, comes out at the end, and the developer's fee comes out at the beginning. So the developer's fee would be a 1% or 2%. Fees to the city are actually relatively small, they, if you look at all the cities and the utility fees and everything else, it was 6% or 7%. Financing costs were about 6%. The soft costs, they had them at 5%, often they're higher than that. But you can see the biggest cost is almost always hard costs, and then land is probably the most significant cost after that. So does that make sense as a big picture? And then I want to, I want to talk a little about the sales side, because it's, I think it's equally important, and it's where actually the inclusionary requirements will affect it the most. I think, to start with, I think it's easiest to think about when you, when you sell a house, like when you sell, if you have a house, who, what determines the price? Like, how do you figure out what to sell it for?
Your own comps.
Yeah, so your comps, you're looking at what comparable houses are. And it's a little different than if you were a traditional business selling a property, where you would determine, you would determine the price, but selling a house is a little more, almost like auction, and you call that a price-taker. So the developers actually don't set the prices of their own units, it's the market that sets them by comparing it to all of the, all the properties that are out there. And if a developer's costs are unexpectedly higher, a developer can't arbitrarily increase their cost to make up for that, because no one's going to care, they'll just look at what's available, and they'll, they'll buy or not buy based on what's available. So that's on the, like, the very far end where they're sold, and I want to, I want to talk a little more about the land prices, because that's actually one of the most important variables when you guys set inclusionary policies, and it's the thing you'll have the most effect over. So land prices get set pretty much like the, like selling a house. It's less transparent, there's not a lot of comps, there's not a lot of advertising, but it's pretty much, someone wants to, if I have a business and I own my property and I want to retire, I'll list my property with a commercial broker, and the commercial broker will try and sell it, and most likely, I'll sell to the highest bidder. Now, where it's a little bit different is, you have to, you compare, when you're selling your house, the person's most likely going to use it as a house, and there's, when you're selling land, with a land with a business on it, you're going to be always comparing the existing use to the potential redevelopment. So the way to think about this is, if I want to start a business, I know I'll do a business plan, and I know how much I can pay in rent in order to support my business, and that will translate to how much I can bid for a property. So the, the current value of the property as its existing use is based on how much money it can make, and then, so that'll give you a baseline. And developers, in order to have, to be able to buy land, they're going to have to bid more than that. Sometimes the economics of their proposal, of their project let them bid higher, and other times, it doesn't, and they just simply can't do development. They can't do development at the location or in the current market conditions. So, and what'll happen is, basically, the developer, what they can pay for land, that'll actually be the last thing in their equation, so they'll figure out what all these other costs are that we talked about, they'll figure out what their sales price is, what their profit need is, and whatever's left is what they'll pay for land. And if they get greedy and want to like pay a little bit less, there's another developer that's going to pay more, because all the developers are getting their funding from the same international sources of capital, and they all, so they have very similar profit needs. So the developers have this very small window, they'll bid what, the most they can bid to make the whole equation work. Sometimes one developer will have a little advantage, say they're doing another project nearby, and they can share equipment or something, then they can bid a little more for the land, and they're more likely to get it, and then that, or maybe they have a specialty in that area, but that'll let them, that'll let them do it. So land price, it's the most variable thing in the equation, and when cities pass inclusionary policies or impact fees, from a developer's perspective, it's just one more cost. Kind of almost, almost the equivalent of a permitting line, now it's a permitting and fees, or if it's, if it's a reduction in sales price or rental price, it comes out on the other end, the minus end of the sales price. But all of those, from the developer's perspective, it, it all affects how much they can pay for land. So if a city passes too many requirements, they, developers won't be able to buy land and won't be able to do development. If a city doesn't pass enough requirements, land prices will be higher, and the city left some of the public value on the table and didn't take advantage of it. Does that kind of make intuitive sense to people? Okay, so things are, they're pretty much the same in a small development, except for, except the percentages of those, the costs are going to be different. And I actually haven't seen any research, I have some thoughts about how they're different, but I actually think this is an interesting area to just discuss. I'd say the general conventional wisdom is much harder to make a small project pencil because the costs tend to be higher. Some cases, they're lower, let's, we can, we can talk about this in a second, but, but they're, they don't always, those percentages won't be the same. Do you guys have thoughts about how a small project would be different in terms of the cost or the sales structure than a larger project?
My guess that, first of all, the finishing on the interiors might be a little bit higher end, but also, you're not buying materials in as much bulk.
Right. So, so they're probably not going to get the same deal on, on, their labor costs are probably going to be proportionally higher. The product they choose might choose to be different in the end, or it might not. And I think everyone's going to look, a small developer or a large one would both look and say, do I want to do very high-end finishes, medium-high end, and they'll all probably, there might be some tendencies, but they'll all be doing that calculation. What are some other potential, potential differences?
Staging of materials and equipment be more difficult on a smaller site.
Right. Everything, everything is kind of more difficult on the smaller sites, so all of those costs are going to be, are probably going to be higher, just because there's less room to work, and it's just more difficult. Anything else?
You might have more subcontractors with a smaller site versus a large one, where maybe you're using a lot of your own employees to get the work done.
And how would that, how would that play out in the market economics?
Usually adds to the amount of time to complete the job when you're facing the financing, which gives you a construction loan, which has a termination date that you have to try to meet, or it converts to a higher rate. So if they're on a timeline and depending on subcontractors who don't show up or have another job and try to postpone it.
So maybe higher financial costs or even higher direct costs also? Most likely, your, your soft costs, your architect costs are going to be a higher percentage because you just have fewer units to spread those things around, and you still need the person to do the designs, but it's not just repeated over 100 bedrooms, it's just repeated over three units or something like that. One of the things that's interesting is the profit needs of the developers actually often a lot lower, because with a three-unit building, you can get in and out of there really quickly. So you might see like a developer wanting a 15% profit for, for a bigger project and just a 9% profit for a smaller one. There's less risk, there's less risk that the market's going to turn before they're finished. So oftentimes, profit needs are lower. Sales costs are, I'm not sure how, obviously, sales costs are going to be affected, and I'm not sure if they would be lower or higher than a bigger overall, than a bigger project. I think that's an interesting, interesting question. But in any case, I think the point is that generally, it's pretty hard to make the real small projects pencil, that's why you see a lot, in a lot of cities, you don't really see, you don't really see too many of them happening. A lot depends on the specifics, and without having really studied it, I don't, I don't want to, I can't weigh in, but that's, so that's, I think, the big picture thing to keep in mind. I think those are all of my, those are all of my points, I guess if there's, I think that's also why you see a lot of cities in the county, they start the inclusionary at 10 or 15, the rules are 10 or 15 units, because they're kind of recognizing the market reality. The other thing is, some cities prefer not to have one site here and one site there to manage, because it can, it can sometimes be hard to manage a scattered site, some of them prefer, they would rather have, prefer their inclusionary units be 10 here, so if they're working with a property, there's enough of them that, like, they'll train the people how to do, to select tenants, low-income tenants or moderate-income tenants, and then, but it's not so scattered. So that's another dynamic, while sometimes you see the threshold higher. A lot of cities, what they'll do is, if they want to capture those smaller units, they'll charge a fee, so they'll charge a fee for the smaller units, and, and then the inclusionary for the, for the larger units. I think that, there's also the market reality, like the percentage reality, that if you start to get to a three-unit building and you're acquiring one of the units, you're at 33, you're a 33% inclusionary, so it's actually going to inherently be higher, because it doesn't do you any good to do two-thirds of a unit or something. Okay, I'm going to leave it there. If there's questions, I'm happy to answer them, but thank you and good luck with your discussions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for our presenter or for staff? Commissioner Gooding?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Gomez?
Well, my one interest, and I did bring it up when we had a meeting previously, was just some broader, like, trends, like the data you had for the town, that was really insightful, the few slides ago. I'd love to see, you know, your reflections are from Redwood City and South City, I'd love to look at something, and maybe it's already out there and it's been published, and I'm just not aware of it, for like the county, and kind of what we've seen, based upon the inclusionary housing bonuses and how they're structured, and then did that yield the results that were intended? I guess that's what I meant, is the policy yielding the results? Because that's what we're talking about there, right?
I mean, I would, I think most cities are pretty happy with their inclusionary ordinances. I know South City's ownership one rules were really high, and when we modeled it, it did seem that that was part of why they weren't getting ownership units, so they, when they redid it, they came down. But, I mean, inclusionary zoning's been around for decades, it's definitely, people have gotten the art much better, like, there was, there's a tendency to hold those units for affordable for longer, that, when the programs first started, they were affordable for 10 years and quickly reverted to market. So there's been changes, there's been more best practices. Some, some other programs weren't prepared for the recession, and when prices dropped, they, they struggled. But I think, for the most part, the trend is more programs, more cities adding inclusionary, particularly in response to the Palmer fix, allowing it for rentals, and very few taking it away. Or if they take it away, it's to move to an impact fee model, not to get rid of affordable housing requirements.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Commissioner Patel?
So in your, in the models that you've studied, what's an acceptable level of profit? So when they're doing their analysis, it does, I mean, I'm assuming it doesn't stop at cost to build minus sales, I mean, there has to be some number that they're going for in terms of percent profit.
Yeah, and I think one thing to remember too, is actually, you think of the greedy developers, but most of that profit is dictated by the perceived risk of the funders rather than the developers. The developers will get some of it, and they'll get that developer fee upfront, but it's, there's outside people putting in more of the money, and they're the ones that have profit expectations. So it's going to change over time, like, if people believe in the stock market, the stock market is generally perceived as a lot less risky than, than construction. So if the stock market's paying really good returns, people are going to want even better returns to put it into construction. If the stock market's bad, interest rates are bad, like, if everything is bad, and people are kind of bullish about construction, they think prices will go up, they're less worried, they'll settle for lower returns. The, like I was saying, the smaller projects, the townhome developments, they can get, they can get slapped up there so quickly, they don't cost that much to build, they don't actually require a lot of skilled labor, so you see, you see people willing to do 8% or 10% profit. The bigger projects, you definitely see higher profit requirements.
Any more questions? Okay, Commissioner Mackin?
Yes, thank you. Josh, I have a couple different directions to ask you. First of all, I've heard and read about construction costs, shortage of skilled labor, increased material costs, that's making it more impossible for developers to do even market rate housing. So let's talk about the peninsula specifically. Are you seeing this happen? Number one, I'll start there, and then I have a couple more.
Yeah, I definitely think that's, that's a phenomenon. Rent has gone up a lot, but generally, construction costs have gone up more, and the, the proform is what developers use to determine if they're going to build, are super sensitive to that construction cost, a small change in it will really make the project work or not work. So yeah, construction costs have gone up a lot. It's made, you see it first on like marginal sites, where for whatever reason, they- It's made, you see it first on like marginal sites, where for whatever reason, there were limits to the sites, and it was, it wasn't a great development site, but you see those not really getting developed. I mean, you see, you see like 6,000 building entitlements issued for downtown San Jose that developers are just sitting on, because it doesn't, it doesn't pencil, we're getting a little bit further away. But you definitely see, uh, what city, I think it was Redwood City was just saying how some of their developers actually approached them to switch a market-rate project to 100% affordable projects, so they could get tax credits and public, and bond financing, because the, the, they just, because it was having trouble penciling now. So yeah, I do think it's a, it's a phenomenon, I mean, you shouldn't base all your decisions on this point in time, but you should, you should keep it in mind.
So, for instance, in Millbrae, where there's a large, large project that's been permitted that was controversial near transit hub, and seems like nothing's happening. So are developers then postponing the inception of the construction in some cases? And if they are, what are they waiting for? Are they waiting, I, I can't see materials going down, are they waiting for better financing? I mean, what's going on? Give me a sense for what's happening.
I don't know about the Millbrae project in particular. My, I, I haven't followed that one closely. My perception was, it was just winding its way through a very slow process, but you might be right, that there might be fundamental problems. I don't know if developers really think, I'm waiting for this. My perception is, they're waiting for their pro forma to say that they'll get a 12 and a half percent return, because the Sovereign Wealth Fund of Norway, who's interested in their project, requires a 12 and a half percent return. And they'll try every way they can to make that 12 and a half percent return, or whatever their threshold is, and as soon as it, it does, they'll, they'll move forward, and if it doesn't, they won't.
Okay, so my next question is, where you bring up affordable units now, maybe being a little bit more enticing, and we know there are state tax credits on this, are we seeing more interest, more projects being submitted in that category?
I think it's pretty unusual for a developer to be interested in a 100% affordable project rather than a market-rate project. So there are the bonds, there are the tax credits, and I, I was saying, I think it's Redwood City that I heard, they just, one or two developers just, just switched. But for the most part, no, I don't think so. A lot of developers just don't understand it, they've never done a tax credit project, they, it's, it's complicated to do a tax credit project, and they're just, they're never going to do a tax credit project. So, so maybe a small trend, but I don't think a large trend.
Okay, so now I'm going to switch gears. Let's talk, you've dealt with other peninsula cities, each one has its own peculiarities, needs, directions. Brisbane, we have a large acreage to our north, nothing going on there yet. Within Brisbane, when we look at what the trends have been in terms of residential, it's infill housing and ADUs. There are a lot of single-family homes, staff showed the one slide tonight. So if we look at inclusionary units, it seems highly unlikely where the infill is three units or less, that we're going to pick up inclusionary units. We have limited land space within central Brisbane. So I went back to a couple workshops we had last year and earlier this year, and reignite the brain cells on linkage fees and impact fees. And I, I found it of interest, because linkage fees, which are assessed on market-rate residential projects and commercial projects, or both, can be built, or, or can be used to amass affordable housing funds. And there are three cities that are doing this, Redwood City, San Mateo, and South San Francisco. So, number one. Second is an impact fee, which is charged on a square foot basis to new market-rate residential development. And there are two cities, a little smaller like us, not a whole lot smaller, Colma and Daly City, and they both use impact fees on rental projects. So what I'd like to hear from you is, what have you seen as a downside to doing this? Because where I look at, what we're seeing are commercial projects and small market-rate projects. And with the formula that you went through, some of these infill housing, it might be difficult to be charged an impact fee, but I'm not certain that's necessarily true. I don't want to make an assumption. Give me some feedback, what you know of linkage and impact fees, where they've been successful or not successful.
Right, so, I mean, I, I don't, I, I have my list on my computer, but there's a whole bunch more cities also than the ones you named. Most cities in the county have, so we can use the terms linkage, impact, fees, however you want it, but a fee on new development to fund affordable housing, either applied to commercial or residential. And there's, it could be applied per square foot, per unit, per, per hotel room, there's lots of ways, but that, the basic idea is, you're charging the new development a fee, it's going into a fund, the city's going to match it with outside funds, and then build affordable housing with it. It's, uh, let's see, for a number of years, there were some legal risks, because there were court cases, they've been mostly settled in the city's favors, they've been all settled in the city's favors, so I think that's, that's pretty safe at this point. You have tighter scrutiny over how you use the funds, if they're in, if you're collecting them, you have to, the California Mitigation Fee Act might apply, which requires some reporting requirements, and if you don't do the reporting requirements, you might have to give them back, and limits how you can use it some more, so that's a little bit of a downside. But overall, I think the strategy of, of moving in the direction of impact fees, either for small projects that can't provide a full unit, or for a commercial development, has been a really successful strategy. I think you'll also have to look at how the city, or think a little about how the city would spend that money, how long it would take to get enough money to actually fund some new units. There's definitely movement in the county to help, to encourage pooling of those funds, so if Brisbane doesn't have it now, they lend it to the, the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust, and that uses it in one city now, and when Brisbane is ready, they get their share of the money back, as well as other money for, so there's, there's a lot of talk about pooling to help address that. But I think overall, it's a, it's a good strategy. In terms of whether or not the, the market could bear fees, like, what level of fees, it would be really hard for me to guess without doing, doing, like, really doing the proformas and looking at economic analysis. The market might be really strong and able to bear the fees, the market might not be so strong and not, and not able to bear many new fees.
So on commercial projects, we're, we're, we're the northern part of Silicon Valley, and we're near the biotech self-proclaimed South San Francisco capital, and they want to locate in this area, and we are near transit. But bringing in those commercial projects also creates that jobs-housing imbalance. So do we see problems with commercial developers saying, oh, I'm not going to pay this? Because they, in fact, are going to create the housing shortage, that not all of their employees are going to be able to afford market-rate housing. And therefore, we really need to look more at how to create the affordable housing. So it seems to segue that having them bring the projects in and pay the fees helps pay for the housing.
Yeah, so the developer reaction has been relatively muted. You see developers say things like, don't charge more than the neighbors are charging, $20 a square foot, or whatever the neighbors are charging. And you see developers that have active projects wanting a phase-in period, because this kind of goes back to the land price. If they agree to pay a lot for the land under one set of conditions, assumptions, and suddenly we're going to, they're going to have a million-dollar charge for an affordable housing impact fee, they've overpaid for that land, and they, they might really lose money, like, they might end up losing the million dollars. So those are the ones, the ones that have active projects going forward are the ones who complain the most. But for the most part, developers, they just want to build their development, if it can pencil with a, with a fee, they'll pay the fee, they just want it to move forward quickly without, like, without questions or hiccups.
Okay, so just really, on one last quick one. If you're trying to attract a developer to take the risk on affordable, being low or very low income, what is the best incentive to attract that type of developer?
If you're, if you're trying to get, well, how do, how do, the things cities can do to promote affordable housing, I think the density bonus is a really powerful strategy, because if you look at things like, well, let's raise money and give it to developers to build affordable housing, that, it's like a, it's like a pound of flesh for the city. It's money that could be used for parks, or for schools, or whatever, it, it's real money. If you allow a developer to build an extra story, it's not like there's not cost, because maybe the community would prefer not to have that extra story, but in a lot of ways, it's creating value. So if you create that value, and then you take something back from the developer, the developer's still happy, and the city didn't have to pay cash. I mean, they, they got more development, which maybe they want to, maybe they don't, but you're creating value. So I think density bonus is a really promising strategy, one of the ones cities have a lot of control over too.
And special-needs housing, does that count? And staff could answer, does that count towards RENA numbers?
You mean, what do you mean, special-needs housing?
Special-needs housing, which in, in our staff report was talking about senior or for people with disabilities?
Yeah, I think, again, we'd have certain sort of income categories, and we have special needs, you can't necessarily overbuild one segment of the, of your sort of affordable housing component to the exclusion of other groups of need in the community. You can't build all senior if you have, you know, a demonstrated need for other sort of niches in the market that need attention. HCD doesn't really, they're sort of frowned upon that sort of monotypic development style.
But it does count, right? Like, with, with that very important caveat, in the eyes of the state, a unit's a unit if it has a, a bedroom and/or, or even a studio and a kitchen and a bathroom, it counts as a unit.
Okay, and then this is, sorry, I'm going to, can I ask another question? Okay, subjective. We hear about housing crunch. We hear about 78,000 employees coming to San Mateo County and only 4,000 units being constructed. I, I would, chance to say those are working people under 40. At the same time, we hear of seniors who are being displaced, if they were renters, they're being priced out, or I suppose in affluent communities, they might be taxed out. Which group has the most pressing need for affordable housing? In what you've seen in San Mateo County specifically?
I mean, it's sometimes easier to answer in a place where there's less need, because the need is so great in San Mateo County that, that it, it's kind of just like, do what you want, it doesn't matter, you'll help. In terms of like spending public dollars, obviously, the biggest need is someone that is at risk of homelessness. I, I mean, in terms of like the humanitarian crisis, that, or someone that very low, extremely low income. But that's not necessarily where the city should put all, some or all of its money. For one thing, to build an extremely low-income unit is much more expensive, and a city might very well decide that they would rather build two moderate-income units than one very low-income unit. I, I feel like it's a values question. I, I generally like to see cities, it's a little hard with, harder with a smaller city, but especially for the larger cities, I generally like to see, at least there's some programs for everyone, and you're not meeting all the need, but that kind of feels the most fair to me. But I think, I think if anyone on, on the commission felt, well, we should concentrate on this particular segment, and it's a fair, honest opinion, I, I think that, that's, it's a fair opinion.
Thank you very much. Thank you, I don't have any questions. Does anybody else have any more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Staff, is that it, or should we move on to our next item on the agenda?
Yeah, that's really it. We, we plan to proceed again with a draft ordinance, and I'm not sure if we have a date tentative yet, Julia, or not?
April.
April.
April, yeah, they're persisting in April.
Yeah, sometime in April, and, you know, obviously, this issue of, of affordability options for smaller projects, and we tried to address it in one degree by sort of the density bonus component. There are other options for, you know, again, whether it's inclusionary or, or fees on smaller projects. We'll, we'll kind of arrange a suite of sort of options for the commission. I think it's also important for the commission to realize what we're going to be, you know, your, your purview in terms of your formal actions relate to the zoning ordinance, which are the inclusionary requirements and density bonus provisions of Title 17, the zoning ordinance. The council policy will drive fees. You may have ideas that, yeah, you would recommend fees for these kind of projects, but that's nothing that's in your official purview, because those wouldn't be created under the zoning ordinance, the councils, the body that, that levies fees. And so you may make recommendations, but they'll ultimately be the ones to, to make that policy decision and implement it via, you know, whatever means they choose in terms of setting those fees and to what projects they apply them to.
If the chair permits, can I ask a question? Is, is it ever, how can I, how can I phrase this? Do you ever have fees that vary by zoning district? Where you might say, the impact fees in this zoned area are X, but if it's in this area, it's different?
Well, certainly you could see it by product type, multifamily versus single-family, that's a very logical sort of divide. I'm not, and I guess if you charge on a per-square-foot basis, then you are distinguishing between, you know, 1,500 square-foot house would pay one fee, and a 4,000 square-foot house would pay another, as opposed to one per unit. And I believe some of the cities have adopted their fees on a per-square-foot basis, so that's certainly, I think, a legally defensible option.
And, and then, commercial fees would be also typically by square foot, which might vary from residential fees?
It would definitely vary from residential fees, and, and they're even, the fees can be parsed between different kind of uses, you know, jobs-producing uses, hotels. The, the, the basis or the rationale for the fee is that it's based on the fact that whatever this sort of subtype of use is creating a demand for service workers that, you know, have an affordability issue, and that's, that's the driver. So, you know, if you think of a hotel, might have a higher, you know, intensity of service use and, and workers who might support, so those kind of things parse out with the, with the fees based on different land uses.
And, and would the 2015 stud, economic study cover that? Or would we have to actually perform a new NEXUS study?
I would probably think we'd want to refresh that work, that would be my gut reaction. That would be, again, the council's direction to authorize that particular task. It does address those sort of, sort of across industries and, and different sort of strategies, how we could apply a fee.
It also tests, like, what the maximum fee is, based on the actual gap between what, you know, the workers who are working at, say, a hotel can afford to buy versus the market price for housing. So it sets like the highest fee that is the actual NEXUS, but then it also tests, but what's actually going to work in the market now. So I think we talked about this before, but the NEXUS study recommended, or presented a suite of options for, here's the highest you could charge, that probably won't pencil in someone's pro forma, so here's the fee that seems like it might actually be feasible. So it did go to that level of detail.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Ray Miller, you have a question, comment?
I have a question. And if you've already talked about this before, and I've missed it, I apologize. But it seems to me that this whole realm of inclusionary and density bonus, regulations and rules and standards and so forth, where it really counts as an abeyance. I mean, that's where we're going to have eventually, you know, lots of houses. And not only are we dealing with our own rules and requirements, most of which is already driven by state law, we've got, what, there are over 200 laws in legislature this session on housing? A lot of it having to do with inclusionary- Uh, a lot of it having to do with inclusionary and density bonuses and taking away local control and so forth and so on. Which is gonna have huge implications. And, and I guess my question is, you know, have you thoroughly investigated that? Are you keeping up with all of this? Are you paying attention to how you can deal with all the impositions? I mean, we already have some in existence, which I'm sure the staff know about. Um, another one, of course, is, is coming down the pike most likely is Senate bill, you know, Senator Weiner's fifty, uh, which is gonna impose, um, density, height, parking requirements on, uh, housing areas. That is, which are already selling for housing, which is within a half mile of train station, which of course is the Caltrain station. Uh, so I guess my question is, I, I just haven't heard any conversation, but what, what, what really counts in Brisbane? And that's what really counts. Not, not, I mean, it's nice to have all these little small things, but they're, you know, they're just a drop in the bucket in comparison to what's gonna happen eventually on the Baylands. And not only in terms of what we can do for affordable housing, but also in terms of impact on the community. So I guess that's my concern. And, and I know maybe you're focusing on that tonight and you've done this on other occasions, but, um, I, I just didn't hear any of that, and so that concerned me.
Thank you, Ray. Commissioner Patel?
So my recollection is, is that I did bring up whether this issue was these, these items that we were talking about were gonna have an impact on Baylands. And the discussion around that was that's gonna be a separate piece that the, um, that when we talk about the Baylands, we're gonna be discussing many of these issues all over again, but this particular piece is for what's, what's existing right now.
And I think we characterize it that whatever is established on a citywide basis in a sense is a floor. And there's, um, separate negotiations with the specific plan being a legislative action that in a development agreement, these other sort of options to have a more robust, uh, sort of program of affordability and other sort of community benefit than, than the city zoning ordinance, um, as it currently. You know, again, we're creating a floor here, not, not setting a cast in stone direction for the Baylands.
Ray?
But it seems to me that when you pass an inclusionary zoning ordinance or a density bonus, it applies across the board. Uh, and, and at least that's the way I understand the law. And certainly the legislative initiatives and the laws that are in process are gonna apply across the board. And those are the ones that you really have to anticipate, to plan for, to think about. Uh, and that's gonna have by far the biggest impact on Brisbane. So it would seem to me that they're interconnected, which is kind of your question. Uh, and those interconnections, I mean, to me, if I were on the planning commission, I'd, I'd wanna talk about these things right away to get ready. Because, you know, Weiner's bill already says, you know, you gotta do such and such within a half a mile of, of the Caltrain station. And it's gonna be imposed most likely. And we should be thinking about that and ready for that. And, and that's what I'm concerned about. And so that's, that's my worry. And, and I'm not telling John anything he doesn't already know. But it seemed to me that the planning commission, you're having the workshops to get ready for things. I mean, this is a thing to get ready for. It's coming down the pike.
I think, yeah, Ray, uh, just to address kind of, I thi- I think we are doing our best to synthesize, you know, what's going on within the context of, of the city. Uh, this, this particular topic was brought to us, I think we've looked at this, what, three times now? Maybe four or five, okay, apologies. So we've been doing our best to, to understand kind of the, the context of, of what is happening here. But I think that one of the biggest challenges we have here in the state is, is housing. And there's a lot of legislative action at the statewide level. And how those policy changes like, you know, trickle down to county and city level, I think is, is, is question marks across the board, let alone does litigation, uh, ensue because of, uh, you know, said future legislation? So I think that as a community, I think we're gonna do our best, and as, as appointees here on the commission, I think we're gonna do our best to really grapple with these, with, with what is in front of us. I can't profess to have digested all of the, you know, legislation that is going on. I will look to, you know, staff to help me and, and, you know, my fellow commissioners, that, that we have these discussions and we do it in a public format. I would hope that we'd get maybe some more members of the public as well as, as this goes along. I, I, I think that this, the way I understand it, I mean, the specific plan is going to be the, the vehicle that really, um, helps us understand and collaborate as a community on what's going to happen, right? I mean, that's, that's, that's the way I understand it. Uh, and I think that just, I'm just kinda echoing the, the previous discussion here, but...
I, I guess my pitch would be, and this is just my way of thinking, and, you know, you all do what you think is best, of course. But it would seem to me that I would not wait for the specific plan. I think you should be really working on getting your head around all these things ahead of time. Cause you wanna be in the position when that comes, to be able to critically evaluate whether it satisfies what's best for Brisbane. And you're not gonna be able to do that unless you've really got yourself prepared intellectually. Uh, and that's what I'm concerned about. And, and, you know, if you find that a reasonable way to go, then I think you need to do a lot more preparation than what I am observing so far, that's all.
Yeah, so, so how would you, how would you envision? Cause as, uh, from an academic perspective, I, I completely agree with you, right? I mean, I'm trying to envision how we would approach that, uh, as a commission and in collaboration with, with city staff and also with engagement from the public, right? Cause we're here to have that sort of, you know, this is a collaborative process.
Oh yeah, no, I agree. But, um, the commission has to give the direction. It's gotta come from you all. I mean, you're in charge of this in effect. Uh, and then you have terrific staff. So, I mean, you don't have any problem there. I mean, there are some cities that can't say that, but Brisbane can, even though we're small. And so then the question becomes, what kind of directives do you give them? What kinds of research do you have them do that, you know, makes sense for them to do in terms of their time and resources and so forth? That's gonna bring you up to speed. And that, I think, uh, the staff needs to be really involved in that. And, and, you know, John has heard me say this before, so he's, he's not surprised at what I say. It's just the way I think. And, and I really think, you know, being prepared, uh, is gonna put you in a position to have an independent perspective rather than just being somebody else's point of view loaded onto you, and then you're not ready for it. And then they say, okay, this is it. I mean, the developers people are gonna be telling you, this is the only way you can do it. You gotta do it, it's the only way we can make you. And you gotta be able to say, well, I'm not so sure. Maybe you could do this or that and the other, you know? And the law really allows this as well as that, you know? You need to have your own ability to say that. Uh, and I know two of you are lawyers, so you know what I'm talking about.
Oh, three of us.
Three are lawyers, oh, okay, three lawyers. Well, then you know what I'm talking about, you know? You gotta be ready. You can't let the person who's pushing their own interest, you know, drive the agenda. That's how I see it.
Commissioner Patel?
So, uh, while I agree with you, I completely agree with you. However, there is, there is some aspects of what you're saying that I think that it could be a poten- a potential misuse of staff time. And this is what I mean. Last year Scott Weiner had a bill that everyone said was gonna pass. Everyone says it's gonna pass, it's gonna pass, it's gonna pass, it doesn't pass. So if we spent a, if we spent six months debating a bill that hasn't passed yet and how we're gonna react to a bill that hasn't passed, and then it doesn't pass for whatever reason, or maybe it's modified, or maybe it's amended. We, we could be u- using a lot of our resources and time and attributing it to a bill that doesn't pass or is modified in a significant way that changes the ultimate outcome. When we could be working on things that are more pressing, such as figuring out how we can actually, um, increase, um, housing in current Brisbane. And we understand that, we understand that Baylands is happening. And actually, the first time we talked about this, we specifically talked about the fact that we are going to have this in-depth discussion on the Baylands and how inclusionary housing is gonna affect the Baylands and what type of things that we would wanna see. But we put that discussion off particularly because we were, we were, we were focusing on what's in Brisbane right now and how we can increase housing in current Brisbane. And that's what this discussion is about. So it's not that we're ignoring Baylands or that we don't know that it's out there or the fact, and staff has brought up the fact that there are many bills that are gonna affect the way that we move forward in the future. It's not that we're ignoring that. It's that we're, in this particular situation, we're focusing on one particular piece of it. And we are thinking about Baylands, but just not right now. And this, we're not having that discussion at this point.
Okay, you know, I certainly agree with you that you don't wanna spend a lot of staff time on things that haven't passed the legislature yet. No, I agree with that. On the other hand, there are some things that the probability of which is getting higher and higher, it, it might make sense to pay attention to, like SB fifty. Uh, but there are a lot of things already on the books, you know? Um, I was just looking, uh, you probably know the law firm, the three lawyers, the mayors and nave, uh, and their public law firm. Uh, and they have a twenty-six page, um, summary of all the state legislation that's already in place on density bonuses. And all the things that are already there, you know? I mean, the reason we have the thirty-five percent density bonus, or that's the ultimate, i- is because of state law. Uh, and so there are a lot of things that are already there. So I'm not talking about things that are just, uh, imaginary or visionary or some one legislator's pushing but nobody else is. Now, I'm talking about things that are already in the books. Uh, and a lot of things that Weiner is doing is, are basically essentially adding to what he has already done. I mean, he's a very clever guy in terms of pursuing his, I mean, he's got his JD from Harvard, you know? And he's, he knows what he's doing. And he's got an agenda. And he's been changing all kinds of laws over the last couple of years, like the housing accountability bill. Again, the staff knows all them. He's had all these changes. And now, you know, the whole effort on the part of the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, MTC, you know, the CASA, um, to, to make housing a regional responsibility. I mean, and there's a law, you know, that some member two has put in to make that happen, you know? So, um, but a lot of this stuff is already in the books. Other things are, are coming along and probably pretty close. So you don't wanna deal with things that are low probability, of course. But when something is already there and it has high probability of happening, I don't know. My proclivity is to pay attention.
Thank you, Ray.
That make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Sorry to take so much time.
No, no, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And John, can you clarify something for me? So when we were talking about this and, and the Baylands, um, am I correct that, you know, if and when we have a specific plan for the Baylands, that this is something we can, um, we'll have flexibility with in terms of, you know, how, how we, you know, handle that?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's also, and there's also, I mean, certain provisions. Um, for example, inclusionary, uh, under state law, you can't impose more than a fifteen percent inclusionary until you've done a, basically, an economic study. So even if it was the commission's inclination to say, well, it should be thirty-five percent on the Baylands, well, until there's a project and until that can be tested, whether or not that can be legally imposed or not. It's, these are all issues that will have to play out as part of the specific plan. And the fact that there'll be a development agreement is, you know, again, that's a very important tool for the city to, to work with the developer and make sure that community objectives and benefits are, are realized in the project. You know, that's, there's a certain, there's always an uncertainty, right, of state law. But, you know, again, various city attorneys and outside legal counsel have posited that the city's best position in terms of inocu- being inoculated from future changes in, in law are having an executed development agreement with the developer, a contract basically with the developer. And, you know, the idea that state law can't necessarily change a legally binding contract. You know, these are all, there's an element of uncertainty. I think we all need to understand that going forward, but that's kinda where we stand.
Okay, thank you. Lot of great discussion on this, and I'm sure we'll do a lot more in the future. Um, so next topic is items initiated by staff. Do we have anything?
Uh, just wanted to, uh, remind the commission of the March twenty-first, the Creating Community Together, our community conversation, a week from tonight, um, up at Mission Blue. I would encourage you to, to, um, formally respond to the, I guess, the Eventbrite, uh, online registrations. We can keep track of people. As we've discussed, the commission will be sort of more in a, um, active listening mode, not a participating in the community dialogue. But we think that's, I think, very valuable for you as a group and strongly encourage all your attendance. They do have dinner and childcare, so hopefully that will help, help it along. Um, a couple of other things, I don't know if we talked about, I think we did talk about, um, short-term rentals and the commission will be seeing that again, um, later in the year. Cause that was referred back to the commission from the council. Um, another thing that's probably on the agenda is some revisions to cannabis businesses and regulations. Uh, that's something that's percolating through council subcommittee and full council. And again, that might be something that hits you, who knows, by the summer. You know, it depends on how the council proceeds as a body. But that's something we've heard that the council is interested in looking at the, the land use regulations. Uh, that would be in your purview. I think that's it. Oh yeah, the tree ordinance, which, uh, you had a good, robust conversation about a couple of meetings, our last meeting. I scheduled for OSEC discussion, Open Space Ecology Commission discussion next week. And then that would again move forward to council, you know, possibly in May or June.
Okay, thank you. Next is items initiated by the commission. Is there anyone who would like to agendize a topic for, you know, a future meeting? Anything you wanna bring up? I have a question, Madam Chair. It's actually for staff. On the February fourteen meeting, we had a couple commissioners absent. And, uh, John, you were doing a presentation on the Housing Accountability Act. And at the time, because we had two absent commissioners, we talked about bringing that back again. So we would all discuss it. Are, are we gonna see that coming back again?
Well, I think the question, the sort of a value-added proposition, I'd probably like to, next time we do this, not just repeat what I did, but actually then move it forward. Cause this was, it was more of a preliminary thing. I think we do need to move forward with language revisions to, again, is, you know, a theme that's recurring here about, I understand, you know, future legislation, but we are in a sense playing catch-up on past legislation and trying to bring our own ordinances into compliance with state law. And that's under the Housing Accountability Act, NSP thirty-five. Those are both endeavors we are moving forward with. So we will come back, but in probably a little more robust fashion than we did last time.
And then just since we brought it up tonight, the impact fees and linkage fees, if at some point we could have a commission-wide discussion on that, I'd, I'd really like to hear what my fellow commissioners would have to say about that.
Sure, I think we could, um, I would think that when you, let me just kind of throw this out there and we can sort of maybe, sort of, uh, I, I think it's okay to discuss it as a body is. And when we come back with the ordinance, those are the inclusionary and density bonus. If sort of a component of how you see, um, a housing goal being achieved is not through what is in your purview on the zoning ordinance by these other means, AKA fees or charges or exactions, that would be the time to make a sort of a companion recommendation. You wanna, you know, amend the ordinance and do X, Y, and Z. So I would suspect we would probably bring that into that discussion. Cause again, we're not gonna be in a position to have a conversation with the commission. I don't think it's very fruitful. We can give you order of magnitude in terms of from that, you know, twenty fifteen study, just so you understand kind of the numbers we're talking about. But, you know, we're not in a position where the commission's gonna set fees or numbers. But you understand them, and if you think, again, that's an approach that you'd wanna recommend the council take, I think we could loop that in, incorporate it into our public hearing discussion as opposed to having another one-off workshop. That would be my thought.
Thank you. Okay, um, I guess that's it for this evening. Can I have a motion to adjourn into our next meeting of March twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.